Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes ma'am, it's all in favor.
Thank you so much. Special items. Individuals to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board on an agenda item? Seeing that there's no one, we'll move on. Student celebrations, Dr. Stevens?
Yes, as you can tell, in the front of the room, we have some gigantic looking birthday cards. An idea to celebrate every teacher and staff member in the district with a birthday card morphed into something extraordinary, having our very own students design the cards. Last year, our digital arts students created and competed in the first ever TCS birthday card contest. Five cards were selected from many, and these cards were mailed to staff members across the district all year long, and I continue to receive thank yous for sending birthday cards even yesterday. This year, Jack T. Farah Elementary, 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade art club students designed and competed for their cards to be selected for this year's district birthday cards. And I just signed all of December's. This decision, by the way, was not easy. We had fantastic cards. Would you all agree? Because I know you were voting. So, district leadership, central office staff, board members, and even my middle school student advisory council, all voted on their favorite cards. And this evening, you see the top five cards. So tonight, we're going to celebrate these winning students. Please help me to welcome the following students, and I will call them up front. They're going to stand behind their card and hold it on display. Riley Carr. Riley Ferguson. Brooklyn Foltz. Marisol Gonzalez. And Malia Copeland. And I would like to welcome their art teacher, Ms. Dee Helton, to come forward as well, please. She is here. And encourage them and help them along the way. Everyone, these are the birthday cards for Telahoma City Schools. How many of you would like to receive a birthday card like that?
Oh yes, definitely.
They are beautiful. They are absolutely beautiful. Thank you all so much for coming. You may take those cards with you. You can hang them on display in your home. Something beautiful to have. Thank you so much. We're proud of you.
Thank you all. They're wonderful. Thank you so much.
Hooray!
Everybody get their pictures. That is so much fun. We always welcome you to stay, but you are also welcome to move on out too with your cards if you want to.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Moms and dads and family for coming.
We appreciate you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mrs. Helton.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. Holland scholarships, Dr. Stevens?
Yes, the John I. Holland Scholarship, as you know, was created in 1978 by a trust fund of $400,000 established by John I. Holland. The John I. Holland Scholarship has awarded well over $1 million to Telahoma High School graduates over the years. The will directs that, quote, "Recipients shall be nominated and selected by the selection committee from the senior class of the Telahoma High School or any successor institution." With the recent addition of the Telahoma Virtual Academy, the question was posed whether the seniors enrolled in TVA would be able to apply and be awarded funds from the Holland Scholarship. After discussing this question with Mr. Jim Henry, Chairman of the Holland Committee, he indicated that it was his desire to have the Telahoma City Schools Board of Education make the determination whether these students fit into what Mr. Holland described in his will as potential recipients. I believe the term used "successor institution" allows for this group to be eligible for application and eligible to receive scholarships funds from the Holland Scholarship. Furthermore, while these TVA students will receive a separate diploma, they will graduate with the Telahoma High School students. It's therefore my recommendation that the Board approve not only Telahoma High School students, but also Telahoma Virtual Academy students to be eligible for the John I. Holland Scholarship. Now, Mr. Henry was going to be here this evening. He, I guess, may be running late, and I know Mr. Miller has been in communication. Do you all have any questions? And if so, we might direct them to Mr. Miller.
I have one question, and that's, does the Chair want one motion or two motions? I know we need to make a motion on Mr. Miller's resolution.
Yeah, well, there's actually, there's actually another scholarship consideration also. So what if we just do separate motions? Okay? Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation that Telahoma Virtual Academy students be eligible to apply and receive Holland Scholarship funds?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Teresa Lawson, a second by Pat Welsh. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes ma'am, it's all in favor.
Thank you so much. Wallman scholarships.
And so, on a similar path, we have this to discuss, and then we will get to a resolution as well. The O.G. Wallman, Dorothy Armstrong Wallman, and Ella Armstrong Scholarship was established in 1992 by a trust fund of $250,000 established by Dorothy A. Wallman. The Wallman Scholarship has awarded approximately $400,000 to Telahoma High School graduates over the years. The will directs that recipients shall be nominated and selected by the selection committee from the senior class of the Telahoma High School or any successor institution. With the recent addition of the Telahoma Virtual Academy, the question was posed whether the seniors enrolled in TVA would be able to apply and be awarded funds from the Wallman Scholarship. After discussing this question with Mrs. Beth Welsh, Chairperson of the Wallman Committee, she indicated that it was her desire to have the Telahoma City Schools Board of Education make the determination whether these students fit into what Mrs. Wallman described in her will as potential recipients. I believe that the term used "successor institution" allows for this group to be eligible for application and eligible to receive scholarship funds from the Wallman Scholarship. Furthermore, while these TVA students will receive a separate diploma, they will graduate with the class of Telahoma High School. It's therefore my recommendation that the Board approve not only Telahoma High School students, but also Telahoma Virtual Academy students to be eligible for the Wallman Scholarship. Mrs. Welsh is here this evening to entertain any questions you may have. The administration does recommend accepting the recommendation that Telahoma Virtual Academy students be eligible to apply for and potentially receive Wallman Scholarship funds.
Any questions? Do I have a recommendation to accept, do I have a motion to accept the recommendation that Vert- Telehome Virtual Academy students be eligible to apply for and receive Wallman Scholarship funds?
So moved.
Second. A motion by Sid Hill and a second by Amy Johnson. Are there any questions? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, Mrs. Vaughn.
Yes ma'am, it's all in favor.
Thank you so much. TCS Scholarship Resolution, Dr. Stevens.
So these past two motions and approvals leads to this next item, which is a resolution for Telehome City Schools scholarships. With the opening of Telehome Virtual Academy, we desire to ensure that our graduates, whether THS or TBA, are afforded the opportunity to pursue any and all scholarship opportunities. We are recommending adoption of the attached resolution, and I'm happy to read that for you if you desire.
That would be great, please.
Telehome Board of Education Resolution dated November 16, 2021. Whereas Telehome City School System, TCS, has historically operated the Telehome High School from which students graduated from TCS and received a high school diploma, and whereas in 2021, TCS created the Telehome Virtual Academy, which allows TCS students to participate in virtual or online learning and graduate from TCS and receive a high school diploma. And whereas TCS has historically had many gracious benefactors which have established scholarships for the graduates of TCS, and whereas the Telehome Board of Education desires for all graduates of TCS, including graduates from the Telehome High School and the Telehome Virtual Academy, to be eligible for any and all scholarships historically available for graduates of TCS. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Telehome Tennessee considers all students that graduate and receive a high school diploma from the Telehome High School and the Telehome Virtual Academy to be graduates of TCS. Be it further resolved that while the Telehome Virtual Academy is recognized by the Tennessee Department of Education as a separate school, the Board of Education considers the Telehome Virtual Academy to be an online extension of the Telehome High School. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education requests for all graduates of TCS, including graduates from Telehome High School and the Telehome Virtual Academy, to be eligible for any and all scholarships historically available for graduates of TCS. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be in force and effect from and after its passage, the public welfare requiring it this the 16th day of November 2021, it having been approved by a majority of the members of the Board of Education of Telehome, Tennessee.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the TCS Scholarship Resolution?
So moved.
A motion by Pat Welsh, second by?
Andy Witt.
Andy Witt. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, Mrs. Vaughn?
It's all in favor.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for the resolution. Thank you all for all the information with the scholarships. Really good. Thank you, Mrs. Welsh, for being here. Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Amy Johnson, a second.
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes ma'am, it's all in favor.
Thank you so much. Moving on to unfinished business. Engineering and Design Services for FARA 2.0, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. At the August meeting, the TCS Board unanimously approved the moving forward of working with the City of Telehome's administrative staff and the City Board of Mayor and Alderman on the next step of securing the necessary capital for the construction of a new Jack T. FARA Elementary School. With the City Board's passage of the resolutions associated with this project at FARA, it is necessary to select a firm to provide the engineering and design of this project. Tennessee Code annotated Section 12 dot 4 dot 106 allows a vendor of these services to be selected using the professional services exclusion. TCS has previously used OLG Engineering for a number of facility-related projects with much success. I've included in your packet OLG's proposal related to the design and engineering services of the FARA Elementary Construction Project. The proposal is based on a total project cost of $15 million. Based on this projected cost, the anticipated fee for engineering and design services is $600,000. Fees will adjust based on total cost of construction. This includes, and I quote, "all elements of professional design with civil, architectural, structural, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, sprinkler intent, food service, and interior consultants," end of quote. The free, the fee proposal does not include reimbursable services as is typical to these proposals. I recommend approval of this professional service proposal for the engineering and design of FARA Elementary with OLG pending negotiation of an acceptable contract between OLG and TCS Legal Counsel in the amount of $600,000. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Do I have a recommendation to accept the proposal by OLG for the engineering and design of FARA Elementary School?
So moved.
Motion by Pat Welsh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sid Hill. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes ma'am, it's all in favor.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Building Access Controls 2.0, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. At the October Board Meeting, you approved the purchase of Badged Door Access Control for the High School and East Middle School utilizing the state's Safe School Grant Funds. As a reminder, the approval from last month included the head-end material needed to run the system for multiple locations. As you probably recall, we were able to piggyback off of a recent neighboring school district's invitation to bid for pricing from System Integrations, which are located in Lebanon, Tennessee. We asked System Integrations to quote our additional building, and the pricing is as follows. West Middle School, $32,372.36. Bel Air Elementary, $19,097.42. East Lincoln, $26,526.85. R.E. Lee, $22,014.32. The CSS Building, $37,856.78. The Maintenance Building, $6,626.14. And the Central Office, $6,782.19. I'd like to recommend the approval of this project with system integration for the buildings with the amounts listed above totaling $151,275.88 using general purpose funds. Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the project with system irrigations totaling $151,275.88 using general purpose dollars?
So moved.
Motion by Teresa Lawson, second.
Second.
Second by Pat Welsh. Is there any discussion? I wanted to ask you, Mr. Ray, was there a timeline, I mean, after this passes, if it does, is there a timeline for the completion of this project?
In speaking with them about purchasers related to last month's approval, they are waiting on components to arrive, which seems to be a familiar answer. So they said as soon as those arrive, they'll start communicating with us related to scheduling.
Okay. Okay, great.
I don't have a concrete answer for you.
Right. There's lots of that not knowing right now, isn't there? Okay, we ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, Mrs. Vaughn?
It's all in favor.
Thank you so much. I think we all feel really good about that happening for all of our buildings. It's really, really great. Thank you all who have worked on that. Policy Updates. Amy Johnson.
Okay, we have updated, we have a draft for policy number 3.404. This is the first reading for 3.404. And the second reading will be in January. No, I am wrong. We are recommending that we accept it on the first of two readings.
That's right. And this is the first reading, and January would be the second. Correct.
Okay. There's a brain out there on Jackson. It got run over.
That's fine.
Sorry.
That's fine. Okay, do we have a motion to accept policy 3.404 on the first of two readings?
So moved.
Okay, a motion by Amy Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson. Any discussion?
I'm assuming this is a kind of a cleanup to the middle school.
You are correct. It is, it is a very detailed policy with a lot of numeration in it, and we needed, we had lots of eyes look at it, and we needed to continue looking at it, and this gives us opportunity to have more eyes see it and make sure that we get it just the way we want. Any more discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes ma'am, it's all in favor.
Thank you so much. And Policy 6.308, Amy Johnson.
See what I can do with this one. Okay, we, the Policy Committee presents this policy, which is Bus Safety and Conduct, with recommended changes. And we would like to accept changes to the policy on a first and final reading, if possible.
Great. Do I have a motion to accept changes to Policy 6.308?
So moved.
Motion by Pat Welsh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy Johnson. Any discussion? As you all know, we're working through the policy manual. We are, we started two years ago in August. We are on Section 6. We are really, really, really being very careful in working through it, and we have, everyone that works with TCS is really paying attention to policy, and when something is found that may need a little tweak or a little change, we bring it to the Board. So thank you very much.
And again, those on that committee are to be commended.
Well, it is.
If you're talking about policy book, it's probably a little, literally a foot big.
It, it probably is. Some, I think somebody asked Andy if he had, if he had read the entire manual yet, so. Anyhow, it's, it's really good. I really appreciate all the work that's being done on it. I know we all do. Okay. Well, vote, all in favor of the change, please raise your hand. Opposed, Mrs. Vaughn?
It's all in favor.
Great, thank you so much. We will have more for you in the future. District Report, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, believe it or not, here we are with three days remaining, and then we head into Thanksgiving break. I know that our students, teachers, and staff will enjoy time off with families and friends during the week off. They'll come back for three weeks of focused teaching and learning, and after that, Christmas break begins. This time of year, as you know, moves by ever so quickly. Quarter Two is one that is always fast and action-packed. It was so much fun this evening to kick off our night celebrating our Jack T. FARA Elementary Artists tonight. We will use these printed birthday cards to celebrate teachers and staff throughout this next year, and as noted, I've already signed December's, they're ready to go. Something I'm additionally excited about is the new TCS Art Gallery. As many of you in attendance have noted, our walls in the Central Office are covered with student-created masterpieces. We are beginning this month with Telehome High School students' pieces on display. To the right of each creation is the student's name, their school, title of the work, and/or materials used to create it. Each month, we will have a different school's artistry on display, which is exciting. In December, we will have Bel Air students' artwork on display, and in January, we will be seeing the masterpieces by our West Middle artists. Invitations are sent to families of these students each month so that they can come to the district between the hours of 8:00 and 4:00 to view their child's artwork on display. Our Central Office staff is beyond excited to have this great artwork here around the building and to have the opportunity to have both student and family interaction. So in news from around the district, Bel Air Elementary Principal, Dr. Clint Epley, shares that Bel Air Bees had a very successful walk-a-thon in October, on October 15th. Bel Air students enjoyed time outside as they walked laps in honor of our first responders. Thank you to our students, parents, and teachers for making this another extremely successful Bel Air walk-a-thon. Jack T. FARA Elementary Principal Travis Moore shares that over the last few weeks, FARA has welcomed several new students to its kindergarten and first-grade classes for rape. It was exciting to have the Telehome Fire Department visit and speak to all grades about fire safety. FARA teachers brought the pumpkin patch to FARA this year. Teachers turned the front lawn into a pumpkin patch for K-2 students and brought in a mobile petting zoo for the second and third grade students. FARA also celebrated Red Ribbon Week and held the annual Math or Treat Event. They have been busy, busy at the pond. In news from Robert E. Lee Elementary, Principal Mary Gilbert shares a big thanks to their PTO for funding two outdoor spaces with picnic tables with coverings and for our Maintenance Department for assembling the outside kits. It is so exciting to move classrooms outside and enjoy the fresh air. How exciting to have the first Halloween Costume Parade outside with Ariel parents in attendance. This was a great day with fun activities and special treats. We celebrated the retirement of our beloved sis, who is known for her love and hugs for the Ariel family and students. She will be greatly missed. Robert E. Lee Lions joined the Veterans Train to honor and show appreciation for their sacrifice and service. Big congratulations to the Lions on the cheer team winning the cheer competition, flag football having an undefeated season and winning the championship, the Lion Run Club, boys play second and first grade came in first for their very first meet. Principal Jason Quick has much to celebrate from Telehome High School. THS won the AF Bridges Award from TWSAA for sportsmanship. Coach John Olive won the TWSAA District Four Athletic Director of the Year Award, surpassed 225 career wins, and celebrated 200 wins with Telehome last Friday night. And it just continues. This Friday is going to be exciting, and I hope all of you are going to be there as we continue to win. The Junior ROTC Air Rifle Team placed first in the Lancaster Matches in Mount Juliet. Cadet Colleen McCullough won a first-place medal for marksmanship. The Junior ROTC Unit was awarded the Distinction as a Naval Honor School. This is such a tremendous honor. I could not be more proud of this group of young men and women. A big thank you to Colonel Johnson and Sergeant Ramirez for their leadership. The THS Girls Cross Country Team placed third in the regional championships and 13th in the state championships. The THS Band held its annual March-a-thon and raised over $25,000 from community sponsors. I am so proud to share that we have eight students named to the Middle Tennessee Vocal Association Honors Choir. The elementary choir is comprised of fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students. Bel Air's Timothy Hansen and West Middle's William Daw, Grace Gandy, and Ally Heiss were all chosen as members of the elementary honors choir. West Middle also had four additional students selected to the middle school honor choir, which consists of seventh and eighth grade students. Congratulations to Alexandria Tobit, Javslin Garcia, Peyton Penigar, and Edgar Torres Metta. I'm excited to share that this school year, I have started middle school and high school advisory teams. These two advisory groups meet separately. I had the opportunity to meet with 14 middle school students and nine high school students since our October Board Meeting. These meetings were the first of what will be quarterly meetings of the middle school and high school advisory teams. I had asked principals to provide me with names of students from each of their campuses. After meeting with these students and getting to know them better, these choices proved to make for a great cross-section of voices. We enjoyed playing some get-to-know-you games to help students become more comfortable with each other and me. They enjoy being in my office and selecting one item they could connect with. I wanted them to see how similar we are in so many ways. It was clear from the beginning that these students take great pride in their schools. I asked for positive feedback related to their school and school life experience, as well as feedback related to some areas that might need improvements or modifications. Each of these students provided honest, valuable comments that I have shared anonymously with their building-level principals. The voices of these students matter, and they are representative of not only themselves, but of their peers. It's important to hear from them regarding what's working, what empowers them, what makes their school experience great, as well as what's not working and/or what keeps them from being their very best. Additionally, we were recently notified that each of our schools is being awarded $1,000 from the Lions Locker. The Lions Locker is a joint project between the downtown Telehome Lions Club and Barrett Construction. Funds raised from their annual golf event have funded this extraordinary donation. If you remember, last year, each of our schools received $500 to be used for clothes, shoes, hygiene supplies, et cetera. This year, each of our schools will receive $500 per semester. Big thanks to the downtown Lions Club and Barrett Construction. I'm excited to share that Telehome City Schools has been named as a 2021-2022 Tennessee Arts Academy Arts Partner School System. Telehome was recognized as demonstrating a commitment to the significant value of the arts in education. I applaud all of you, board members and community members, as your commitment over the years to emphasize and prioritize the arts in our district. It makes a daily difference in the lives of our children. I look forward to a busy week and weekend, as I will be joining you all at the TSBA Annual Convention. It's important to note that, like many of you, I will be traveling back to Telehome Friday night as our Wildcats move on to the quarterfinals and take on Pearl County. Go Cats! Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So many wonderful things going on. Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, I have a little report. It's a little report. This fall, the Telehome Chamber of Commerce asked for and received nominations for Telehome residents under 40 years of age who are leaders in our community. The 40 Under 40 chosen for this recognition were celebrated on October 27th at a chamber event held at Twin Creeks. Telehome City Schools is the proud employer of seven of these outstanding community members. They are Al and Jenna Morris, Angela Cardwell, Dr. Clint Epley, Jared and Macy Olive, and Zach Birdsong. We appreciate all that they do for Telehome and for Telehome City Schools. Let's give them a round of applause. It just so happens that they're not our employees, but we will claim them as ours. There's two other 40 Under 40 recipients here. Rupa Blackwell was also one of the recipients, as well as Erin McCullough. Thank you so much. And now to hear from city liaison, Rupa Blackwell.
Do you want me to come up there, so you can hear me a little bit better? I'm excited to actually share today's updates with you, because they are all, I think, incredibly exciting, and I'm gonna go with the least exciting to the most exciting.
Okay.
And I apologize, I've been Christmas decorating today and that's probably all morning. Okay, so first of all, I want to start with, we have a new website now for the city, that's the least exciting thing to share, and so I don't know if you've checked it out, please do, it, it's very informative in terms of what's going on in the community, our board agendas, et cetera. It's much more easy to navigate, thank goodness. So that is the first update. The second update I have for you is that we are still in the comp plan process. We had a huge meeting last night where an initial draft of the comp plan was presented. I would recommend that you guys, Dr. Stevens, thank you so much for sitting on that steering committee for that, too. But it is, it's been a lot of work. They've come up with some really good ideas. Please take a look at it and give the feedback to us so that we can share it as well with our city planners. Another thing I wanted to share, before we go, we have hired a new fire chief, Chief Pearson is now our fire chief, and Dave Anderson is our new Parks and Recreation Director. There is, Sue Wilson and Jennifer Moody had a ratings call with Moody's Investor Services today, which is necessary for our $15 million school bond issuance. That meeting went really well. She expects to have a draft rating back on the 22nd, and this is the more exciting for y'all, and to issue the bonds the week of the 29th. So it's coming. They were very positive about our economic outlook, how we financially positioned ourselves during the pandemic, and complemented our ongoing stability in maintaining adequate reserve balances. We anticipate we'll remain an AA2-rated community. So this is huge news. This is also giving you guys a better timeline of when that money is coming down the pipeline. And then my final update, which is actually, I think, the most exciting, is back in 2014, the grant contract with T-Daw was originally approved by the Board of Mayor and Alderman regarding a Safe Routes to School grant for extending sidewalk from East Gun, on East Gun, grudging from College Street back to the existing sidewalk at Dawson Apartments. We are finally able, 2021, to move forward into opening construction bits on this. So this is a huge, huge win. Hopefully, as, as you can tell, things do move incredibly slowly, but that means that we are moving forward finally for the Safe Routes to Schools. So that's the final one that I have for y'all, so thank you.
Oh, that's all excellent information. Thank you so much. Yes, all, all good, all good. And I really, really appreciate all the work that's been done on Think Telehome. I have enjoyed all of it. I wasn't present last night, but I was watching, and I think the team that's, that's leading is really, really good.
I'm excited.
Yes, so lots to, lots to come. It's really good. Anybody have any questions? Comments? All good, thank you. Thank you so much. Personnel Report, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, personnel updates have been provided for you for November.
Thank you. Monthly Financial Report, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. You have in your packet a financial report through the end of October. As we are typically, we're still lagging behind in revenue, which is to be expected. I will note that sales tax continues to beat the budget expectations, which we are appreciative of. I would also be remiss if we didn't say thank you to Jennifer Moody and Sue Wilson on their work on our behalf related to the bond for the new FARA. So I appreciate their tremendous amount of work they did on our behalf.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you so much. And would you please pass our appreciation along to them?
Absolutely.
And they'll, they'll receive a note from us, too. Okay, is there anything else to come before this board? Yes?
Well, Mr. Quick's here, let me make a quick congratulatory, just thanking, backing up Dr. Stevens' report, and that's the AF Bridges Award for Sportsmanship. Mr. Birdsong wrote a really nice press release when we received that, but to emphasize, again, Mr. Bridges was the first executive director of the TWSAA, and he served for many, many years, and after he retired and was passing, there's been several athletic competitions named after him and this award, of course. One of the, the largest cross-country meet in the state, other than the state championships is named after him, there's others. But this is, this was an award that would, if he was with us now, he would really, really be proud of, and it's not one that's given out easily, and you're being congratulated for, for the high school to be recognized in such a way, and we hope that it continues that way.
That's great. Yes, thank you. Excellent. Anything else? I'll just ask if you would just stay for just a second after we adjourn, so we can see our basket for the, that Amy has done for us.
Good.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion by Sid Hill, a second.
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, Mrs. Vaughn?
It's all in favor.
Good. Meeting adjourned.